Well, thank you very much for coming. Tonight is the second in a civic engagement workshop, second civic engagement workshop in a civic engagement process that will continue through next Tuesday when we go to city council with the results, and then potentially again on Monday, the 30th. We've been very happy with the input that we've got since the last civic engagement workshop on the 28th. So we're excited to get going, and Mr. Doug Johnson from NDC is here to make a presentation of the results so far. And then we will open the floor to additional public comment. So before we do, I want to have an announcement in Spanish.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Circedo, Court Certified Interpreter/Translator, Superior Court of California, certification number Judicial Council 30249. I'm required to say that. This hearing will be simultaneously interpreted into Spanish on Channel 18 on TV, so it will be in English and Spanish. And also, the two interpreters downstairs that are doing the simultaneous interpretation, we have them connected here. We have a Spanish station with three earphones. So if you desire to hear in Spanish, you just sit down there. The volume is down below, and you can hear all of the meeting in Spanish. Also, when you come up front, if you're going to express yourself in Spanish, I'll be your interpreter. Rápidamente en español, esta audiencia va a ser transmitida en ambos idiomas, en inglés y en español, por el canal 18. Abajo hay dos traductores simultáneos que están haciendo toda la interpretación simultánea de esta audiencia, y hemos conectado a los traductores simultáneos a tres audífonos en esta estación en español. Aquellos que deseen escuchar toda la audiencia en español se colocan los audífonos y lo escuchan. Yo soy Carlos Circedo, traductor certificado del Estado de California, certificado 300249. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to Doug Johnson, and then when he's done with his presentation, we'll open it for public comment.
Okay. Okay, I got my wireless. So thank you all for coming out. It's great to see so many people here and participating in this process. So I have a presentation. As you know, this has been a fast process. Some of the maps, we were still processing over the weekend, and actually just got the last ones up on the website today. So given that you haven't had a lot of review time, I will be walking through the maps each time, and then hopefully the authors of the maps will come up and elaborate on their thinking and their thoughts behind their plans. So let me start with the process and the timeline that we're on. As was mentioned, this is our second workshop. After this, we'll move to formal council hearings, where I will be down there, and the council will come back up here. And so we have had a couple of weeks, and I do want to say, given the timeframe that we have to work under, the participation and people jumping into the website has been great. If we have more time, I usually go back and forth with folks, and they can ask more questions, and I can help more with the plans. So given how little time there was, especially for that back and forth, it's been great to see so many people using the website and getting involved. Just a reminder, those of you that were at the last workshop have seen this slide, but as we're going through the plans, these are the requirements. First of all, we have federal laws. One, that each district has to have an equal population. There's a little bit, may, you know, the largest and smallest can differ by about 10% at most, but really, it's a fairly tight requirement of equal population. Then there's the Federal Voting Rights Act, which just very briefly says that we cannot, in the plan, either dilute and crack a protected class, which essentially means Latinos, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, or Native Americans, in a way that would reduce their ability to exercise their electoral power, really to elect their chosen candidate. And once there are enough of a protected class to be a majority, you can't pack them all into one seat so that they win that one seat, but then lose the ability to influence a second or a third or fourth seat. So those are two federal laws. In the settlement here in Santa Barbara, there is essentially an agreement that there will end up with two seats that are essentially majority Latino by citizens of voting age. That's a census term, but the courts have interpreted that number to be the eligible voters. So that's kind of more specific language on the voting rights requirements. So those are the must-dos. Then we have the traditional criteria, which are really goals that the courts have set are acceptable and good things to try to follow as we draw the lines. Obviously, communities of interest, keeping neighborhoods together to the degree possible, keeping the seats compact and contiguous, really so that the voters can understand where their borders are and tell each other where the borders of the districts are. For the same reason, we want to follow visible boundaries wherever possible, major roads, rivers, hills, mountains, whatever we might have. Again, so that the districts are easy for the voters to understand. And then continuity in office. The goal is, where possible, to leave the decision on re-electing a council member up to the voters, rather than redistricting coming through and pairing or tripling or whatever, council members in one seat. The one big difference with the traditional criteria is that they are goals. It's impossible to draw a plan that is perfectly compact and equally populous and that does all of these things. So when we're looking at the traditional criteria, we're looking for a plan that best balances them. No plan will achieve all of those goals. So now, that's just a little bit of brief intro. What we're really here for is to look at the proposed plans. So I do want to add that the plans are online on the city website. If you haven't been to this page, I highly recommend you go there. I do have to say, the city staff have been fantastic. I have been just bombarding them with things for the website, and they have been getting it up very rapidly. It's been phenomenal to see how quickly they move. But we have the original plans that were here. Then, this link, looks a little subtle, but "public comment," that's the form that you can fill out. And as we go down, let me jump down a little bit. This link down here, careful if you click on that, because we've gotten a lot of forms and letters and emails. It's about 72 pages of public comment, which is why we don't have it printed out for you as well. So if you want to see all the comment that came in as of Thursday, I think, at the end of day Thursday, it's all in one big PDF file there. And then, of course, as we'll go through, each of these links is a plan, and those are the plan names. And if you click on the link, you'll get a PDF map, you'll get a demographic spreadsheet, and you'll get the comments from the person who sent in the plan about what they were looking for. So there's a lot of information here. If you, after tonight's meeting, if you want to go back and say, "Which plan did this?" You can go there and click on those links and get all the details.
Put the page back that had enlarged type the link.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll go back to the PowerPoint. Yeah. So this is on the city site. It's a little bit of a long link, but if you just go to the city website, you can get fairly easily to the district elections page. There's also the schedule of the council hearings up there as well. And at the very bottom of the page is the information from going back months that's been presented to council on this issue. So there's a lot of information there. So what we have to talk about tonight, and I will try to do this quickly, but I do want to walk through the plans, because some of them were just posted today. We have 21 plans that have been submitted. We have, at the end, you'll see the three drafts that we looked at at the last meeting. There's a draft, revised version of draft one that I'll mention, that comes from talks with the plaintiff's group. And then there are 17 plans that members of the public submitted, so kudos to people for getting involved in this. The one plan, I don't know if they got it up, because I just sent the files to them last night, but this map, the Community, Santa Barbara Community Map 2, may not be on the website yet. Oh, is it really? Oh, wow. Awesome. Staff continued to blow me away with how quickly they get things up, because I sent that to them at about midnight last night. So thank you. So we'll go through all these plans, but I'll sort them in a way that hopefully will make them easier to classify and think about. One thing I do want to emphasize is that the council, when we go to council, and when you're thinking of your comments to council, you don't have to endorse just one plan. What we really want to hear is what you like and dislike about the different plans, because it is possible to take parts of one plan and parts of another plan and combine them into a hybrid for the final map. Say, half the city likes the west side in one plan, and half the city likes the east side in the other plan. Well, we can try to find a way to blend those. So you don't have to come in and say, "Just vote for, you know, Community Map 1." We are looking for, "What do you like about Community Map 1? What do you dislike about the other maps? What makes it stand out?" So that as we put all the comments in, and this council finally makes their decision, we can try to be accommodating to everyone's goals, not necessarily with a specific map. So, starting off, I've grouped these into plans, what are they, what's their origin? So we did have three maps that were drawn completely from scratch that looked very different than any of the draft plans. And these are my classifications. The submitters did not say I based this on whatever draft one. One of the things I've done in these slides, though, is summarize some key criteria. So we've got the plan names, and these three are a plan called 3-2-1 Distribution, a plan for Mr. Crowe, and then a plan called Downtown District. Where the people gave their plan a map, I've used that name. Some of the maps came in in paper, and the person didn't give it a label, so I just used that person's name. In terms of population balance, I talked about, we can have up to a 10% maximum deviation in the final plan. 3-2-1 Distribution and Downtown District are fantastic, 1.3%, 0.78%, well within the limits. Mr. Crowe's map, as you'll see, is 197% is way off. They're, all three are contiguous, all three are relatively compact. That's a very general classification. And then in terms of the requirements from the settlement agreement, the Downtown District has one majority Latino seat, and then a second seat is 44. I highlighted in yellow items that are close, that, you know, I wouldn't necessarily completely rule out this map, but in order to comply with the settlement, we'd have to adjust that second seat to get up higher numbers. The red is more of a concern. It's going to be hard to get those two, those seats up. But I also highlighted these concerns, because I'm hoping that the authors of the maps will also address these comments in more detail and suggest ways of addressing these, or why they did not get there. So, the 3-2-1 distribution map, you can see, essentially, we have a eastern portion of the city seat, really a central downtown, almost to the beach, although it doesn't quite get to the beach seat, a Mesa seat, I don't know, Oak Park, I guess, centered seat, and then the hills in the Upper East, and then a far western seat, which is very common. You see some, in some of these maps, you'll see, you know, somewhat interesting intermixing, as you do here. That's just population balancing. That's part of the reason why they got to such a, almost zero deviation. So this is the 3-2-1 map. The submitter, in the comments that are posted online in those packets you can see, was aiming for, as he put it, I think it was a "he," "three white seats, two Latino seats, and a sixth seat that would be an opportunity for progressive win." That's how he classified it. So that's where the 3-2-1 comes from. And I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. Obviously, the submitters will have time when I finish to talk in more detail. Mr. Crowe, if you go online, you'll see he sent a long letter objecting to some of the kind of race and ethnicity focus of the discussion. And you can see that the deviation problem in his plan, you've got District 5 is enormous, and District 1 is tiny. So there's a long way to go to get this map to a balanced population map. The Downtown District, this plan was mainly focusing on putting together the downtown areas they defined it. So you've got one, a very Latino seat. I talked about their most Latino seat was above majority, as the settlement looked at. And then 5 falls a little bit short. You can see their 5 is a little bit different, and it comes farther east than the draft plans do. So, like I said, I'm going through this fairly quickly. 6, instead of being concentrated along here, now pushes north and divides the San Roque So that's the maps drawn from scratch. Then, poor draft 2. Nobody based any maps on draft 2. And as you can see at the bottom, it's a draft, we put it out there to get the discussion going. It doesn't quite get to the majority seats, but it's close, 49% and 45%, but it doesn't quite get there, which is probably why people weren't looking at it very much, or they didn't like how it drew the lines. But this map is still out there as a discussion piece, but didn't get much attention in the public comment. Then we had draft 1, which had a revised version. As we're going through this process, in addition to hearing from the public, we also heard from the plaintiff's group, obviously members of the public. And one thing they suggested, let me switch over to the maps, was, let's see, where's draft 1 revised? Was that the border for draft 1, between 2 and, I'm sorry, between 3 and 6, actually cut the campus of a school, if you're familiar with it. It's, what's?
Harding.
Harding School, that's right. Harding School actually crosses Robin Street, actually stops the school. So the change there was simply to take this zero-population block and put it in to unite the school campus. So that's why there's a revised version. Yeah, here we go. So there's the change. There's also some changes on the border of 6 and 4. This was actually, the version I had used for Plan 1 was different than the version, we've gone through a lot of versions, than the version that I should have used for draft 1. So you can see, draft 1 had kind of a drop-down square and then back up along Victoria Street here. And this revised version comes across Annapamoo?
Annapamoo.
Annapamoo. This project has been a linguistic challenge in learning street names. And then Down Bath, and then, what are we on here? Should have covered it. And then Correo. This is Correo Street. So small changes in those two areas. So when, I know we got a number of calls when it popped up saying draft 1 and draft 3 had been revised. Draft 1, it was just those small changes. And then for draft 3, actually, we didn't move the lines at all. It was simply changing the citizen voting age data, which, we were working out which set of data we wanted to use. So that's draft 1 and draft 1 revised are essentially the same, except for those small changes. And as you can see, their demographics are essentially identical. Then we get three other maps, all of which are very close to, well, they're within the 10% population balance. The Page Map is at 9.5, so it's pushing that 10% limit. If that's the map the council eventually wants to choose, it probably suggests we make some small changes to reduce that, but it's within the 10%. And they're close. Eye on State, which I'll talk about, is a little bit short in the percentages, and the Page Map is short in the second seat, but within the range where we could fix it, if that's the map that the community and the council wants to go with. So, draft 1, you saw if you were here last time, you get a District 3 and District 1 that are identical in both draft 1 and draft 3. Those are the two majority Latino seats. In draft 1, you get 2 coming along the beach and going all the way to the west edge of the city, and then 3 really wraps around Bel Air, around, to the edge of downtown. I'm sorry, that's 6 wraps around. 5 is the northwest, and 4 is really the northeast, and then downtown. And then I showed you the changes for revised. Eyes on State, the idea of this was, the idea of having as many districts as possible touch State Street. This is kind of the City of Pasadena's model. When Pasadena went to districts, they also wanted to rent, to revitalize Colorado Boulevard. And so they drew the districts so that each council member had a piece of Colorado, and thus a stake in the redevelopment of that street. This is somewhat the same idea. You can see all the seats but 4, except for District 4, have, are touching a significant portion of State. Obviously, State then turned and goes through 4. But the main downtown State Street area is heavily touched by each district. Then we have the Page Plan that was sent in. You can see, 1 is not that different than the draft plan. It is a little bit different in this area, but 3 is significantly different. It doesn't go up nearly as high, and instead, it goes east-west more, and it's more compact than the draft plan, but get a little less Latino. This also then allows no more of a wraparound for 6. 6 is a more compact seat in this plan. And then I called this plan Roosevelt Elementary, because the submitter's main goal was, almost everything's the same as Plan 1, except that the north border of District 1 moves south one block to De La Guerra. That's, as the author of the plan wrote it, "That's to unify the Roosevelt Elementary attendance area in District 4." And to offset that change, it comes up a little bit and picks up a little bit more around Solidad over here. So very small change from draft Plan 1. Then, we had a whole bunch of proposed variants on draft 3. You can see a different mix. Draft 3 had a 4.36% deviation, contiguous, and it actually had the same districts 1 and 3 as draft 1 did. The CCPP Plan, I'll talk about in a minute. The Network Alliance map, almost all these, except for the green map, have, are good on population deviation. CCPP is too high, but I'll talk about why and how that can be fixed when I show that map. They're close. No one's way off on the Latino numbers, but some of them are not quite there. So let me jump in. Draft 3, the big difference from draft 1 is the configuration of 2 and 6. So in this case, 6 doesn't wrap around. 2 is more compact, 6 is more on the, stays on the east or northeast side of District 3. Tell me if I say this right. Is it Ellings Park?
Ealing.
Ealing's, Ealing's Park. So the only change from this group, and we got a lot of people who requested this change, and when I say a lot, it's about eight or 10, I didn't do a specific count, but eight or 10 people wrote in, and none of the population changes from draft 3. The only changes here is the Ealing's Park, and then the other park and beach down here on the edge of 2 and 5 are moved into District 5. So that's a zero-population area. There's no people moved as a result of that change, but there were a lot of forms that said, "We'd like you to move the park into District 5." So that's the only change there. The CCPP Plan, California Center for Public Policy, this is one where, given more time, I would have worked out the population deviation, we would have gone back and forth. This is one where they sent in a letter asking for a plan drawn this, they didn't draw it themselves. And so I drew what the letter asked for. The big change is over here in the east. You can see draft 3 comes up into the hills a little bit. And what the letter said, and my apologies for not having more time to work it out, was to bring that line down to Salinas Street as much as possible within the population deviation. But the problem is, is that the first census block there has 1,800 people in it. And so the moment I took that block out, I was way out of balance. And so there wasn't a 200 people like the letter asked for. So I just took it all the way down to Salinas, with the knowledge that to fix that deviation, we can simply walk it back up.
Are we locked into census blocks? Because there are some really strange census blocks.
Yes.
One that has, you know, three people in it, or 1,800 people in it.
Right. Right. Yes.
Doug, when you repeat the question.
Oh, right, because I'm on the mic. So the question was, "Are we locked into census blocks? Do we have to follow the census geography, because there are some really weird ones?" A little background, census blocks are great when you have city blocks, nice clean city blocks. Census blocks hate cul-de-sacs, and they hate hills. And so they make it very hard to draw lines, just because they did these, the census blocks are drawn by computer, and the computers don't like hills. So we are not forced to follow them completely, but the moment we start varying from the census block lines, we get into population questions, because our population counts are only available by block. So no, we're not locked into it. It's a big challenge to work without them. But draft 1 and draft 3 both have split blocks in them. So yes, we can split them. A little leery of splitting them for population balancing, rather than for other issues, but it is possible. So yes, there's ways we can, that's why I put it in yellow, even though it's 27%. We can fix it in this, in this case. So then, this map is mostly smaller changes along the edges of seats, not a wholesale change to draft 3. The Community Network Alliance is one of a handful of maps. You'll actually see this a lot. If I go back to draft 3, you can see up here where it comes across Cota and then kind of steps up. That's really population balancing. I was trying to get an even population in that area. We got a number of maps, including the Community Network Alliance, that wanted to put that corner in. You can see from the little red dots, those are the city's general plan neighborhoods, so trying to unite that. If any of you were part of it, this is the 700 block of Solidad is right in here in De La Guerra. Wasn't able to quite do it, and this comes back to your question, quite do it using blocks, which is what I was using, because this little block here actually extends all the way up into the hills up here. So don't worry so much about that notch, I mean, mention if it's a concern, but when we, if that's the map the council wants to go with, we can cut that block and clean that up. So that changes there, and then you can see, in this case, they don't take that bump out into Eucalyptus Hill in order to, they trade that population to make it square. The other thing that this map does, and a couple maps do, is move the border of 1 north to pick up the junior high and the high school. Those are those two little red school symbols. So those are picked up into District 1 in this plan. And then over here in District 3, there were a couple of comments of this, of picking up Pershing Park into District 3. Pershing Park is part of the census block with the campus, but it's of note that it does not pick up the campus housing. There's actually no people in the campus thing. The only people in this census block are right up in the corner, you may know the, I think there's two apartment buildings that are just north of Pershing Park. This is one of the challenges in districting and the Voting Rights Act. That little area, we're only talking about about 60 people, I think. The total people who live there are heavily Latino. It's about 2/3 Latino in total population. The challenge is, is that a lot of them are not citizens, and so among the citizens who live there, it's only about 20% Latino. So this is the difficult challenge we face when trying to measure Latino voting power, is if you put this, that area in, the citizen voting age population of District 3 goes down, even though you're putting in an area whose total population is 60% Latino. So it's one of the challenges. The other drawback of this, just in terms of compactness, is obviously then District 2 has to wrap around to pick the area. So that's a little bit of a compactness challenge for us. But that's what's going on down there. And again, in the final map, we could, you know, if there was a reason and really wanted to keep the whole college campus in District 2, we could split the block. Actually, that's the kind of block split we like to do, because it's all the people on one side and zero people on the college side. All the college housing is over here and stays in District 2 in this plan. Oh, I should note, though, if we did split that block, though, we'd still have, we'd still have the carve around, just because of how close the park comes to the beach. So Ms. Green sent in a map, the same thing with Pershing Park down here, the same thing up here around Solidad, and the same thing with coming up to the schools level, to pick up the junior high and high school into that seat. So a couple of people thinking along the same lines. I don't know, they didn't mention if they're working together. I do love it when people do work together, so no problem with that, but very similar maps, same idea. Then, this map that was called Santa Barbara Community 1, this map was drawn online, so used whole blocks. This is the map, map 2 just went up online. I want to thank the people that drew it. I put this map together first, just the way it was drawn online, and I missed their note to me, saying, "Please split a couple of blocks." So that's where, thankfully, they followed up and flagged that. So really, this is the map that they intended to submit. Really, the only difference is over here, these are whole census blocks, and what they wanted was to really follow the west, the east side neighborhood boundary. So this map is, the demographics on both maps are the same, because we're not splitting the demographics of the blocks. But this is the plan that they were submitting, and that their comments reference. You can also see, they also pick up the junior high and high school, much more of a consolidated downtown in District 6. downtown in District Six. And four, instead of coming downtown, now comes across up to east San Roque, Rocky, The other difference here, because six is picking up more population down here, five now comes across more to the east. I like that people clearly embrace the idea of trying to draw plans for communities of interest and neighborhoods. The plans all have names of Santa Barbara Communities and Santa Barbara Neighborhoods. It's great, good to see people embracing that. This was an interesting map in that it puts most of the hills together. You have one big seat, District Five, that is clearly hills. It gets a little narrow in between, but that's just a function of how the city border is drawn, obviously. Yeah.
Is the blue line a natural boundary, or is that a straight, is that APS? The border line to five, all the way across.
Oh, it's.
Is that APS?
No, no, it's using different things at different parts. So it's streets through here, mostly streets, I think.
In the city.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so it's coming, five is coming all the way down to this line here, as you go across there. So then you've got, the other piece of this map is then you've got six really getting downtown, coming down all the way to the freeway. One is similar to the draft plans. Three, it comes up a little farther, it's a little wider in the west side. And two is moved over to the east. It doesn't come into downtown as much, and again, goes up and gets to the schools. And then in this case, you've got three, which is comparable to the other two, but it comes farther over along the beach. Interesting map, very different than a lot of what we've seen.
Does that map comply with closing north?
Go back to the table here. Good question. It's close. So I put somewhat because of the city border has that weird thing up north. But it's close on the percentages. It's not quite majority on either seat, but it's close. So I say close because we could adjust it and all that good. And then, forgive me if I mispronounce this, but Mr. Vasallo, Vasai, oh, how do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Vasallo.
Vasallo, excellent.
Sorry, I didn't name it, but if I had to name it, I'd call it West Downtown.
Oh, okay, yes. So this map is just a very small change to the Draft Plan Three. It's the area right down here. It's really about, what, eight city blocks or less? Just moving out from three into six to unite them with the rest of downtown. So small change to the Draft Plan. And let me go back to the table. I think, yeah. And so that change actually brings the Latino percentage of the second seat up. It gets the deviation up a ways, but one, what the courts look at when they look at deviation is, is the deviation for a specific reason. You know, if you're within 10%, they want to say, okay, why are you 6%? Why are you 8%? And in this case, the reason is very clear. It's to unite the elements of downtown, and Mr. Vasallo sent a letter that nicely discusses the community of interest connections between those areas. So then, my last set of three maps to show you, and then we'll get into the real meat of tonight, which is your thoughts. These really take the two seats that are common to Plan One and Three and really keep them as-is or close to as-is, and then radically redraw everything else, which is why I kind of grouped them together. So the Maintaining Neighborhoods Plan is population balanced. You'll see the compactness, why I flagged it as somewhat. It's fine on population balance. The Mission Heritage Plans One and Two are close. Those of you that use the online system know that going from 11% to 3% is very, very tedious. So it's no problem if people didn't spend the time to do that. We can certainly do it as we move forward with the process. So first, the Maintaining Neighborhoods Plan. This is the first one that has really a coastal seat. The whole coast is in District Two, all the way until you get to the far west. So interesting, different idea. That pushes District One up a bit. This has, all the plans that were drawn online have this, and that use the Draft Plan One and Three seats, have this weird block over here and this weird block here. That's because the online system didn't let anyone split a block. We'd cleaned that up, obviously, before adoption. But, so you get District One that's pushed up and doesn't go all the way to the beach, but otherwise fairly similar. It does pick up the Solidad area. Then you have a very different District Four. And then District Five is the hills, as in the other plan we looked at. And Three is essentially the seat off of the Draft Plan. The Mission Heritage One, this, I recommend you, if you're interested in this plan, go online. They have a big description about the neighborhood interest here. It's primarily focused here in District, what's labeled District Six, the Upper East Area, and the community of interest up there. The first plan they sent in, I appreciate they were quick. They sent it in very fast after our forum. They drew that, and then obviously Five is a little odd-looking, but they clearly realized that Two, and they followed up with a second version, which has essentially that same District Six focused on the community of interest they were talking about, but then spent some time cleaning up Five and Two and making those much more compact. And again, this is, this is little intermixing of blocks. That's how they got down to such a close population balance, and we can work on other ways to do that in final adoption, if this is the plan we go, the public and council go with. But that's really the big change, is you get more of Four coming in to, all the way over to Three, and then Six moves up and focuses more on those neighborhoods. So, a lot of information. One thing I want to note before we go to your comments, which is really the main focus of tonight, is the online system is still up. We're not looking for people to submit plans. We've got the agenda packet already processing and all that. But as you may have noticed, or you may have not noticed yet, there are a lot of collaboration tools in there. You can share maps with other people. You can put notes on maps and send them to other people in your, in the group you're sharing with. So feel free to continue to use that as a collaboration tool and to talk with each other. If you want to bring a map into the council meeting, you can draw it on there and bring it in, but we won't have time to process it and get it in the agenda packet like we did for these. But we will continue to take comments, you know, as with any council item. You can continue to mail or email or however you want to share your comments between now and then, although I do hope you'll share your comments now. And then obviously, the next big step will be on the 24th and 30th as we go to council. Let me add, if you want me to show a map on screen as you're talking, I'm happy to do that. I also have both the mapping software up, so if you want to talk about a specific area, we can zoom in. And I even have Google Earth up, so if you really want to zoom in and show a neighborhood or a building or whatever, we can, we can bring that up if that helps you with your comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we have, is this a question before comment, or should I, before we open up public comments? We can do it as part, you can ask questions as part of the comment period if you're, yeah, okay. All right. So then what we'll do is we will open up public comment on the items. We aren't limiting public comment to two minutes at this point unless we get to the point where we feel like there's a need to. The point of today is really to get as much public comment as we can. Also, feel free, if you come up once and give comment and then want to come up again, we're not going to limit you to coming up just once, but do be respectful of everyone else who wants to get a chance to talk. But the idea is if, if you've got an idea, if you have input that you'd like to give us, to give you every opportunity to give that input to us. We are going to ask that you fill out a speaker slip either before and bring it to me either before or after you give your comment. And that's not, we won't be calling names or anything. We'll actually just have you line up as we did at the last meeting. But that will give us your names written correctly so that we don't misspell it in the minutes. So with that, we have the podium up and available, and if you'd like to come up and do a public comment, please feel free to approach the podium.
I'm 3-2-1.
Oh. Excuse me, sir. Probably best if you identified yourself for the record.
Certainly. I'm Howard Green. There was another Green up there, and I'm grateful there's another Green here, but we're not associated. I found it difficult, and I guess it showed in my results, to get the correct percentages because there were three sets of Hispanic percentages. And I wish it had been much clearer which one we were supposed to optimize to. And so I put that down as a hard of use aspect of using this. And the other thing was, you may recall that I contacted you about using a SQL Select statement to try to find the high percentage. You pointed me to a facility that perhaps you can show others now of, to the left of the, if you can show the.
Yeah. The secret arrow. That's what they called it. Let me pull up the other PowerPoint. There.
There. There's a secret arrow that is there that attempts to try to identify the high population groups, and it was not very granular. It seemed to block in only 25% blocks. And I think if you have the opportunity between now and next Tuesday to make that in 10% increments, it would be very helpful in identifying high population districts and for the one of those three Hispanic populations that is the most meaningful. I tried to use it, and it seemed to be there was either 100% or 75% or 50%, and that, those weren't useful percentages. I mean, 50% was not enough, and 75% was okay, but I couldn't tell whether it was 50 to 75 or 75 to 100. All that's to say that I was trying to make blocks that were, districts that were moderately Hispanic-oriented, but not dominantly Hispanic-oriented for two districts. And to have one district that I'd like to promote as a goal for a district, that it be an ecumenical district, a district that is designed to be as, to catch as many Hispanic and other ethnic groups, African-American, Asian, and others, to represent a group that could really represent a nice mixture of Santa Barbara as a third district, as a goal to have a district that represents a real mix, rather than having four white districts.
Let me just ask, is one of these districts in your plan do that?
Could you put my plan up?
Yeah, this is yours.
District Six was my attempt to have an ecumenical district. Thank you.
I will. I'm Wendy Welcome. I represent four of the plaintiffs in this. And I'm here just to give our comments. We gave them to Mr. Cologne earlier, and I will say that I thought I had all the maps, but was short four. So I can't speak to the last four you have quickly put up. I will say that we commend this process. We think it's fabulous that the city is so involved and that you are working so very hard to do a very difficult task. I will also say that from our purposes, our focus is obviously the two majority-minority districts. It's very important. It's the heart of our sense of what the settlement is, and we think it's doable. Of the plans that are proposed so far without tweaking and tinkering, there are approximately seven, which actually provide, at least that I see, two majority-minority districts. Some of them, in our opinion, are irreconcilable with other of the traditional redistricting, districting criteria. One of those is the concept of how equal the population has to be. You've been talking about a total deviation of 10%. I will tell you that in talking with our expert, we are looking more at a 5% total deviation, which really affects a lot of these maps. Of those that do conform to the 5% and the majority-majority, one is the Maintaining Neighborhoods of Interest. And I will tell you that our concern with that is that it has taken the beach away from the east side, which we feel is a very vital component of that community. We also think it mismatches the neighborhoods on the coastal areas. I will also make a comment for Mr. Crowe. I don't know if he's here. Who was upset that one of the boundary lines split his house. And I will state for the record that we are very willing to work with you on any kind of lot split you want to propose that will include a house. We would have to see what you want to offer on that, but we're very, very open to that. We're also looking, if you're actually concerned about deviations that are more than five, at exactly the reasons for any over-five deviation. It's very important to us. And finally, I want to say that in addition to the neighborhood areas, which we are trying very hard to conform to, we have been working with not just the neighborhood plan in the city general plan, but the density plan. And it's our understanding that the density lines that the city has drawn are often highly representative and very important to follow as well. And our districts that we proposed follow them very closely. So again, I want to commend the city. I think you're doing what needs to be done, and commend the public for all of its input. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Excuse me. Sorry. My name is Milt Hess, and I am representing the Upper East Association, which is the neighborhood association for over 260 member households who live in the Upper East. And I really appreciate the opportunity that we have had to submit our proposal, which is the one called Mission Heritage District Two. Mission Heritage District One was first draft, and you can throw that away. After reviewing the three draft maps that were prepared and presented, our board members felt that these options don't adequately reflect the Upper East community of interest. So the board has proposed this fourth option, and it's intended to achieve two key objectives, and that's the point of my comments here this evening, just to emphasize, we feel that the Upper East itself should be contained in its entirety in one district. And some of the, some of the configurations break us in half, and we don't like that. The other key objective is that the district of which we're a part should share our common interests. And the folks on the other side of State Street from the Upper East share the same streets. They are similar topography. They have similar residential characteristics. And therefore, we feel that both sides of State Street should be part of the same district. So we ask you to give this serious consideration in deciding among the configurations. And I thank you.
Yes, my name is Gregory Freeland, and I'm representing a group of community members a group of community members who have been here for several decades, many of us, and we are very sensitive to communities of interest. So when it came dividing up what we felt was a real strong community in the six districts, we were very sensitive to trying to make sure that things went that way. So Districts one and three in the map number two, Districts one and three are designed to comply with the court settlement, maximizing Latino voting power in these predominantly working-class Latino neighborhoods. These are similar to Map Three produced by the city, with the addition of the area of the east side of Salinas, which has traditionally been part of the east side community, while removing the Eucalyptus Hill area to District Four, as it is more like the rest of the Riviera. District Six is drawing to represent the political voice of the younger, lower-income, more transit-dependent, and overwhelmingly renter population of downtown flatland areas. So in addition to the downtown Oak Park areas, it extends north along De La Vena to State to include the apartments and condominiums along Calle Crest Base. District Five and Six both include neighborhoods that are significantly, but not majority Latino, to ensure Latino communities outside the east side and west side have political voice within these districts. Districts Four and Five have older populations and ensure political representation for seniors. For example, District Five contains three of the larger retirement communities, San Marcán, Valverde, and Vista de Monte. Districts Two, Four, and Five are designed to represent neighborhoods predominantly middle to upper-income, single-family neighborhoods. The coastal areas are concentrated in Districts One, Two, and Five to ensure some council members are focused on coastal environmental and tourism issues, while District Four is designed to represent hillside environmental interests, along with Two and Five to a lesser extent. All districts touch some segments of State Street, ensuring that all council members will have a stake in business issues along the State Street corridor. The Upper East Side of Santa Barbara, from Constance to Valerio, is included in District Four, as this area is similar to the Riviera, with larger lots and more single-family homes. The area south of Valerio is comprised of more apartments, duplexes, condos, and multifamily dwellings, so it belongs to the downtown area. Thank you very much.
My name is Luca Zucker. I'm a researcher for CAWS, formerly known as Santa Barbara's Pueblo. CAWS organizes and advocates for underrepresented communities in Santa Barbara, including Latinos and immigrants, young people, working-class and low-income families, renters, and people dependent on public transit. Issues impacting these communities often come before City Council, yet these are the residents least likely to have a voice in decision-making. CAWS believes that City Map Three is the best option of the initial maps presented by the city. Our preferred map is the Santa Barbara Community Map, submitted by Dr. Greg Freeland, who spoke before me, which is similar to Map Three, but makes some improvements, we think, to keep communities of interest together. First, we believe the city should not accept any map that does not have two districts, which are a solid majority Latino citizen voting age population, or in the case of the west side district, as close as it can be, you know, it seems like most maps are around 49 points something, depending on a census block or two, whatever tweaks are necessary. But we also want to make sure the City Council notes that there are neighborhoods outside of these two districts, which are made up predominantly of working-class families and younger apartment dwellers, which also have significant, although not majority Latino populations. These neighborhoods should be kept together. For example, City Map One and several other maps that are based on it put much of the west downtown with the Riviera, which clearly does not follow logical communities of interest, and in doing so disenfranchises the many young people, renters, and Latino families who live in the downtown area. On the other hand, City Map Three and the Santa Barbara Community Map put downtown with Oak Park, protecting the voice of this underrepresented community of interest. We urge the City Council to only consider maps that protect the integrity of the east side and west side neighborhoods, as well as a third district containing the other neighborhoods near downtown, whose populations include many low-income and working families, young people, transit users, and apartment renters. Thank you.
My name is Rose Aldana, and I represent the Community Neighborhood Alliance map. The reason I'm discussing here today is after your comment of the numbers not reaching a certain percentage, I'm asking that the map that we put together, Area Three, also incorporate Mountain Avenue and West Valerio. West Valerio is a canyon street, and it has numerous Hispanic families. I grew up on Robbins on Santa Barbara West. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I currently live on Santa Barbara East, and very familiar, I've been born and raised in Santa Barbara. So I'm very familiar with the city and these neighborhoods. The two that I'm commenting on is first, as I have, Area Three, District Three, and now District One. The numbers came in a little low at 14, 922. So my request was to add in some squares here at the top by Santa Barbara. Is this the map that you have? Is this the map, my map?
Yes.
Okay. So my thought is, Milpas and Annapamoo, add in squares or blocks to adjust the numbers. It's near the high school, and there are families that live near there to help create the balance that's needed. And I'm not certain if Cleveland School was incorporated. I see there is squares above Salinas Street, and they, if that, so those two squares should stay on the other side of Salinas.
In District Four?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Eucalyptus Hill. Okay. Can I hand this to you? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon. City Council expert Doug Johnson, Ms. Check, Ms. Schmidt, and attorney Ms. Cologne. I am one of the plaintiffs. I guess in pro per and forma per pere est, I was fired by my own attorney, or attorneys, Capello and Noel, but that's neither here nor there. I think the settlement agreement that we have reached is a start. I think this could have happened in a special meeting a long time ago. We didn't have to expend so much money for, say, Margaret, Margaret Mariglione's firm, $400,000. We still have a blank check for the expert Doug Johnson. We just possibly paid out Capello and Noel $600,000 when the leadership in the City Council could have taken the leadership in a special meeting, and we could have done this town hall meeting a long time ago. We just need it here to the California Voting Rights Act, because there is vote dilution. There is racially polarized voting. It didn't start this millennium. And if we are not cognizant of it, and we're not conscious of it, we're never going to heal as a community and pass this, because there is vote dilution and racially polarized voting in the city of Santa Barbara. When we look at the census blocks, sir, if you could, District Three map, your revised map, when we talk about census blocks, we're already undercounting the population. It's already a mathematical deviation where it doesn't include all the population. There's many studies that allude that censuses are undercounted by, say, for instance, we have 38%. We're more like 51% of the city population. But then we're not acknowledged. We're not represented in the City Council dais, and I think that's why four plaintiffs have come into a settlement agreement. That's strong, but there's so much work behind it. Otra vez, yo me llamo Cruzito Herrera Cruz. Yo soy uno de los demandantes.
My name is Cruzito Cruz, and I'm one of the plaintiffs. Yo estaba representado por mi abogado. I was represented by my own attorney. La agencia de Capello and Noel. The agency of Capello and Noel. Por la razón de la juez Donna Gek. And by the reason of the Judge Donna Gek. Y la orden que ella aprobó. And because of the order that she approved. On declaraciones falsas. Based on false statements. And mociones fictional. And fictional motions. De mentirita. Of little non-truths. Y ahora yo estoy navegando solo. Now I'm navigating on my own. En este caso. Within this case. Pero ese es el momento que nosotros. But this is the moment that we. Como comunidad. As community. Pudimos hablar para formar distritos. We could talk if we finally established the districts. Para resolver. In order to resolve. El acto de California. The California law, or the California voting act. Código 14025. Code 14,025. The code electoral. Which is the elections code. Los expertos han dicho que somos 38% de la población. The census says that we're 38% of the population. Pero tenemos que realizar, somos 51% americanos. But we have to realize that 51% were all Americans. Cuando comenzamos a decir que nomás hay 38% latinos. Well, we start to say that there is only 38 of us that are Latin. Vamos a considerar que segunda ciudadanía. We're going to consider that this is like a second citizenship. Tercera clase de ciudadanía. Is a third class of citizenship. Pero también en este proceso legal. But also in this legal process. Fundamental. Fundamentally. Una persona. One person. Un voto. One vote. En este aspecto de contar la población. In this aspect of population counting. Contamos a todos. With that, that way, we can count everyone. Los porcentajes matemáticas que están presentando. The percentages, the mathematical percentages that you're presenting. No son correctas. Are not correct. Y si tiene que realizar, somos como tres distritos. And they have to be made, they should be three districts. Por qué vamos a arriesgar dos distritos en el barrio? Why is it that we're going to risk two districts within the neighborhood? Y tener desigualdad en los cuatro distritos. And then have inequality in all of the four districts. Yo no vine aquí en este caso para discriminar a mi gente americana gabacha. I did not come into this case to discriminate against my white people's citizenship like me. White Americans. White Americans. Yo vine para tener un base de igualdad político. I came to have an equality political base. Porque los distritos del east side y el west side. Because the districts of east side and west side. No han sido representados históricamente. Have not historically been represented. Y la infraestructura, estamos hablando de esta rita. And infrastructure. That's what we're talking about. Los jóvenes y los adultos. The young, the old, or the adults. Los descapizados que no tienen casa. The people with capacity and the ones that are homeless. Y también todos que viven en la área de la ciudad de Santa Barbara. And all those who live in the Santa Barbara area. Los comentarios que tengo deteniendo los distritos. The comments that I have concerning the districts. Tienen que reflejar los intereses de la comunidad. They must reflect the interest of the community. Todavía no han tomado las escuelas. They have not taken into account the schools. Los votantes en los distritos. The voting people in those districts. Los resultados de esos votantes. The results of those voting. Y al mismo tiempo, la educación de interés socioeconómica. And the interest of the social, the socioeconomical interest of those populations. Esa es una base muy importante a basar como Distrito Cuatro. That's an important base in order to establish like District Four. Que a veces hay un desbalance. That sometimes may be in imbalance. Con educación. Education. Rentar. The rental. A tener un terreno de casa. To have. Un parcel. To have a parcel. Hay mucha diferencia en orientación política. There is a lot of differences in political orientations. Entonces tenemos que ser conscientes también de esos intereses. Of those interests in particular. Entonces nomás le doy gracias a todos por escuchándome. I just want to thank all of you for listening to me. Hemos llegado a un puente muy grande. We have arrived to a very large bridge. Para tener distritos en Santa Barbara. To have districts here in Santa Barbara. Y pues agradezco pues mi ex-attorneys que hicieron trabajo. I thank my ex-attorneys for doing the work they did. It's a little baby file, I see, court case file. Easy, real Doug Johnson, híjole. Pero gracias a Dios que vamos a llegar a una resolución. Thank God that we are going to write the resolution. Y va a haber un poder político. And there will be a political strength or political power. En cada distrito. In each one of those districts. Y le doy gracias a los concejales y a la mera Schneider por su trabajo. For their work. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Tony Vasallo. I live at 514 Brinkerhoff. And when I looked at the maps, Brinkerhoff and the immediate area around us was not located in downtown. I guess City Hall wasn't even located in downtown, according to some of the maps. And I used Map Three to make the adjustment. And being sensitive to the ethnic compositions of the different districts, I tried to just define an area that was very small that could be part of downtown. Certainly, the Brinkerhoff Historic District has always been part of downtown. All of our issues are downtown. We are downtown. The area I proposed to be added to the downtown District Six on Plan Three is bounded by Ortega on the north and Gutierrez on the south, De La Vena on the west, and I guess State Street on the east. And I believe you have the comments that I submitted to city clerks, so I don't need to run through all of those comments again.
Yes, we have them, and they are posted on the web with your map as well.
I'll just summarize those and make a strong statement that our neighborhood, Brinkerhoff and the surrounding streets, is probably one of the most diverse ethnically, as well as economically, that you can find anywhere in this city. Beginning with large, expensive condominiums on Chapala, which is a stone's throw away from the area of proposed here, and yet a block away, we have a new city housing project for special-needs people over on Bath Street. These are all parts of our neighborhood. I hesitated to include too many streets because I was afraid that the percentages would be turned upside down, and I wanted the map that I proposed to be within the guidelines of the court mandate. But we have Salvation Army around the block from us. We have a wide range of ethnic representation in our neighborhood, and also economic strata in our neighborhood. All of us have one major thing in common: we are downtown. We are west downtown. I walked here from my house in less than five minutes. That's how close we are to the heart of downtown. To take that away from us and put us in a district that's not part of downtown, I think is going to be problematic. I'd like to point out one other thing I noticed on the maps you showed here. I saw several maps that took the Eucalyptus Hill area and divided it. And I'm not speaking for the Eucalyptus Hill Association, but it seems logical to me that you might want to look at the Eucalyptus Hill map association area and keep that whole association, which is, I mean, I think they've got a 30, 40-year history of being an association, and it seems like that whole association should be in one district. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mary O'Gorman. I want to make it clear, I'm speaking for myself.
I want to make it clear I'm speaking for myself tonight as a resident, longtime resident. Okay. And I wonder, could you put up the community plan two? As I mentioned at the workshop a few weeks ago, I'm not happy about the idea of the city going to districts. At the same time, I understand the law behind it, the spirit behind it, and there's no doubt that, you know, racism has affected the composition of not only our council but many others over the years. And if this is one of the steps we have to take to address that, you know, I accept that. At the same time, my commitment always, I've lived in almost every neighborhood in the city over the last few decades, but is to find a way to have the best public policy that we can have for the entire city. That's my concern about the districts. And, you know, in looking at the maps, and I haven't had a whole lot of time in the last two weeks to really devote, but, you know, I believe what I like about this map is that it not only meets the requirements for the east and west side districts, but also allows another district that has a diverse population, you know, renters, young people. That's District Six. You know, I'm, as I mentioned last time, on the Upper West Val area on the 1500 block. And the reality is, there are no maps that really put the few blocks, you know, above the west side, you know, that we can't be part of the west side. So I accept that. At the same time, I am concerned, and this is one of the unintended consequences, and I know the city council doesn't have any jurisdiction over it, but, you know, right now, the Mesa Village Association and Alice is here. You know, they're going through setting up a charter and all of that and defining boundaries. And my concern is that, you know, those of us in the other parts of, you know, Alta Mesa, above Alta Mesa, and like, you know, a lot of the maps, you know, Bel Air, whatever, you know, may or may not be part of that. So that's something that neighborhoods will have to deal with. I've heard neighborhood associations mentioned a few times. I think the reality is, is that they're not all going to end up in the same place, you know. But anyways, you know, I think that this meets a lot of my concerns. I had a concern at one point in a lot of the maps about the coast all not being in the same place. But, you know, I like that, you know, really, the watershed in this one that goes to Royal Borough is kept together. And I know I've been involved in community plans on a county level, and that's something that we look at is the watershed. And it's also good, as someone mentioned, I don't know if it was Greg, who happens to be one of my neighbors and kind of shares that whole thousands block of West Val area conundrum with me. But he, you know, having more than one council member who, you know, deals with coastal issues, because coastal issues are so important, and so I think this one does that as well. So, and I guess my last point, and it's more of a question, and maybe to you, is process. Do you know what the process of the next meeting is going to be? Because to do this in two meetings, are there going to be, or map's going to be narrowed down? Because one thing I would suggest is that there be packets, paper packets, available to people in the audience, because not everybody has access to a computer. So to truly get comments, I mean, that's, you know, I've seen that done in other districting. So do you know what?
We haven't worked out all the details, because part of it is dependent on the feedback we get today and then how the council wants to proceed, but we are, sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so what the plan is that we will start to compile the information into a report, a summary report. Doug's going to get that to us on Friday to take a look at. And we're going to try and get that posted by Wednesday, excuse me, Monday at noon on the city's website. And we will also have that summary report available for people in the clerk's office if they want to come take a look at it before the meeting on Tuesday, so.
Have copies here?
I will have copies here.
Okay, and that will include the various maps?
It will include the summaries of the various maps that, you know, we don't, we don't have it all together yet. I'm not exactly sure what's in it, but, yeah. It will have at least some of the maps, okay?
Thank you.
And I'd add too, we'll obviously get this presentation that I gave today over to the clerk's office, and that'll go on the web as well.
Okay.
One of the challenges is, you know, careful what you wish for. There's so much public involvement, and the public's been so great at drawing maps that it's harder than most of these projects are, where normally we only have three maps. It's a lot easier to provide handouts and paper maps.
This is Santa Barbara.
Yeah, I'd love to see it, but it's a lot harder to provide paper maps when there's 20 than when there's three.
I understand, but, you know, what this will be once every five years, I think, or something like that, so.
Well, we'll do it again.
I mean, I understand there's too weak, yeah.
Yeah, the city will do this again in 2021 after the new census date, and then it'll be every 10 years after that.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Hillary Blackerby. I'm a city voter and a longtime Oak Park resident. You can leave that up, that's fine. It's been a very interesting and rapid process. I'm a map geek, so it's been exciting to me. I think it's kind of cool that the east side district looks like Wisconsin on its side, for any U.S. map geeks out there. But, you know, it's been very interesting to think about and look at all the different issues. I would say, as my neighborhood, Oak Park, I think, has more of a community interest shared with downtown than with Sammercand. That's been proven in elections, that's been proven in a lot of different things. Heavy renter, you know, apartment dweller population in Oak Park. No offense to the Upper East, I think you should be kept together too, but not with Oak Park. I think it's good to keep together and makes sense with Riviera or San Roque, or part of it east anyway. I also, I noted online, there's a bunch of Ealing's Park, Royal Borough Beach wants to be one place or another. I don't think that ultimately matters a ton, because there's not a lot of people living in those two parks, so whatever floats your boat, I guess. But I think that's important. But I do think the opportunity to have a downtown district with Oak Park, you know, I agree with Mr. Vasallo that certainly Brinkerhoff and the area around is more downtown-y than anything else. So if there's a way to balance things out, I think that's good. Definitely, the little tricky census tract in Eucalyptus Hill above Salinas, I think should be drawn like that, so that you see, just by seeing how many people live in that census tract, how dense it is, and knowing that it's a community that definitely fits with the east side. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, obviously, the maps that don't get to 50%, I think we should kind of stop wasting our time with and just move on, because the way that they're tweaked is, it would just take too much. Map number one, if you could go to that one revised, or whatever the current one is. And several maps were like this, I'm sure they were building on map one. The fact that, you know, Parma Park would be in the same district as west downtown is, I think, fairly ridiculous. And I know that it gets the numbers right in districts one and three. And so if the real concern is the representation in districts one and three, to create a weird District Four, I don't see the point of really, or why the plaintiffs are interested in that necessarily. But I think otherwise, the one that was up there, the community plan, or they all have community or neighborhood in them. But the one that you were just showing seems compact. It seems like communities of interest are kept together. And, you know, I do think keeping Oak Park separate from Sammercand, keeping the Flatlanders together, I think is important. So I hope that the council is willing to kind of Frankenstein it all together and make it fit and make sure that communities are kept together. Also, the coastal portion being split amongst other districts, I think, is important. And I think this one, each one of them touches State Street somehow too, so I think that would be good. All the council members would have a stake in that, so I think that's it. Thanks so much.
Howard Green again. Since I was the first speaker, I don't think that I'm out of turn to speak again. I think we have a majority of the council here this evening. And I think it would be interesting for them to individually speak as to what kind of staff work they'd like to see presented to them. Would they like a map that represents Doug's best guess as to what it should be? Do they want three or four maps to discuss? They don't certainly want 20 maps to discuss, but I think it would be interesting to have two or three, or perhaps all of the council people here and the mayor, speak what sort of staff work they'd like to see presented to them next week.
Let me respond to that. My name's Ariel Colón. I'm the city attorney. The state open meeting law doesn't allow us to have council feedback at this meeting. The meeting was noticed so that a majority of the council could attend. But their plan is to get into this in detail next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m.
My name is Tom Williams. I attended two of the meetings that the city had several weeks ago concerning capital projects and unfunded abilities. There were approximately 500 people that attended those series of meetings. After that was over, the city council observed that the 500 people that attended was not a fair cross-section of the public. And therefore, you authorized the expenditure of around $40,000 to get some experts that would have a balanced opinion. This time, you hired the expert first instead of later, and I think that was the way to go. But I think you need to realize that this meeting, last meeting, the future meetings represent a very small percentage of the Santa Barbara voting public. I'm not a computer geek, nor do I have a relative that's one. But it's obvious to me that, looking at these various maps, many of them have some kind of a process in mind or a point in mind. And that may or may not represent the greater part of Santa Barbara voters. The greater part of Santa Barbara voters is not here tonight. They weren't here last night. They're not going to be in the future. We have to look to the experts. And if you fall victim to some special interest other than the majority-minority districts, that's already a fixed item. If you fall victim to somebody else's or some other group's narrow point of view, I think you're failing to recognize the great bulk of Santa Barbara people. I've been a resident of Santa Barbara, an owner, an employee, or a employer, sometimes all three, in downtown for over 50 years. I am extremely disappointed to find out that on almost all of the maps, downtown is carved up into little pieces and dished out to at least three or four different council people. 60 years' worth of work by innumerable city council people, thousands of employees, employers, city attorneys, with one exception, of course, redevelopment agencies, all attempting to get Santa Barbara downtown and keep it relevant, keep it boxed together, so that it doesn't fall victim to the destruction that many cities have seen. One of the things we should be proud of is that Santa Barbara hasn't been fallen victim that way. And now it looks like it's inevitable that it's going to be chopped up, whether we like it or not. It seems to me that downtown, many voters, employees, employers, council people, innumerable city council people that have worked, they've worked for years to prevent that and to keep that from happening. And it seems that we need some kind of comment as to why 60 years' worth of work to keep downtown, to make downtown the redevelopment program in its entirety was set up to stimulate downtown, to keep downtown from going the way of other downtown. That's now going to be parceled out to various groups that may or may not have any interest in downtown. Certainly downtown, because there's very few voters downtown. The representatives would be elected by the bedroom somewhere else. They may or may not be interested in their little section of downtown. I've noticed that most of them are carved up into at least four districts, sometimes more. Downtown really deserves some explanation of that, even if it's, even if the explanation is that it's just the way it's going to be. I think we should be notified and some explanations be given to us. Thank you.
I'm Alice San Andres Calleja, community organizer, publisher, editor, gardener, and janitor of the mesa. I always use that title. First of all, I am not, I feel ill at ease about this districting process, because Santa Barbara is less than five square miles, land and water, and we're districting for the purpose of, you know, representation. I'm a minority. I'm, I belong to an ethnic group. But when I vote, I always think of myself. When I opted to become an American citizen, I dropped the Asian. I'm American. So that if I want my voice heard, you know, when I moved to Santa Barbara, I did not know a soul. But now, I think I know half the town, because I did my due diligence. In order to be recognized, to be heard, you have to do your due diligence. And I think that's what I did. I wonder, among the people who made all this districting, how many have actually been out there? I can proudly say, for eight years on the mesa, I do twice a year door-to-door campaign. I have been to every home on the mesa at least three times. So I know what it is to be out there. I have also, since I published the mesa paper, I host the Allied Neighborhoods Association. So I have interviewed all the neighborhood heads. So I know where their little niches are. But to have to think that, you know, I'm Latino, I'm Filipino, or let's just be all Americans, but we're here in the process. So my comment is, when I started the mesa community, the mesa proper, which is Alta Mesa, West Mesa, and we've redrawn that actually, based on empirical, you know, like, we have Alta Mesa, and when there's an Alta, there's a Baja. So when I started that, actually, Braimar, the Campanil, they joined us, and the Upper West Side. So we have a little Greater Mesa community. And so when I was looking at your plan, I think it's Plan One or Two that's more like it. And we ended, yeah, actually, not the one including Hidden Valley. Yeah, more like that. This is more like the realistic, because when I do the door-to-door campaign, it always includes Upper West Side and the Campanil, or we call the Braimar area. So that's my two cents worth. And I think this is just sad that we have to be districting Santa Barbara, because we're a small community. That's my two cents worth.
So this isn't a threat, but I'm just wondering how much time each person is allowed? Because I'm not, I don't want to go long, but I want to be concise as possible.
We aren't limiting time at this point.
Oh, good for you. Good for you. Okay, well, I'll be concise. If you could go to the Santa Barbara community number two and then put that up there. So I think that there's, I have a couple of sets of comments that I'll try and bucket probably into three or four groups. And I think one of the first ones that's easiest is, so my background is, I've lived in Santa Barbara for 15 years. I've lived in the Mungalo District for about 11, was up on the Lower Riviera for four years. Have kids that go to Roosevelt, have been very active, for example, doing sports locally in youth sports. Have gotten to know a lot of the different sets of parents at Peabody and Adams and Roosevelt, and so on and so forth. One of the things that really.
Let me ask your name.
Oh, Eric Jensen, sorry. Oh, Eric Jensen, sorry.
Thank you.
My, my apologies. It was on the thing. The, one of the things I noticed in the draft plans, one, two, and three, and, and I apologize if, if this isn't correct, but it was something that stuck my, stuck in my head, is that Samarcand was more or less consistently split out. And then in particular, Hidden Valley was not included with Samarcand. And if you can follow the Adams Elementary attendance area boundary, they're both big contributors into the Adams School. And Adams is, is a very rapidly growing, has a very rapidly growing sense of community. They've been doing a great job there. And I think keeping the Samarcand and the Hidden Valley together, and I, I, there's probably a couple of other areas that need to be included in there, but I would pay real close attention to the attendance area for the Adams School. I, I think that they've done a remarkable job in a short period of time. And, and those folks, again, it's a strong sense of community. Hopefully, we can reinforce it with this. One of the other things I wanted to point out on this map that I've also seen in a couple of different maps, and I think it's an artifact of the general plan and how they define the neighborhoods, is in the Bungalow District, we are called out, I think there's actually language that describes the Bungalow District as its own neighborhood, but then we get, we get stuck into Laguna. And I know that there was, there was a lot of discussion a while back about how much density and development and condos versus, you know, single-family residents and that kind of thing. The Bungalow District has a very specific identity, and, and they do speak to it in some detail in the general plan. There's a couple of inconsistencies, which I think were just left unresolved. I don't know a lot about the discussion that went on, but I, again, I think the fact that the Bungalow District is sort of lumped into Laguna is something that just happened, that the neighborhood boundary there is not maybe the best. If you do look at the Bungalow District, I think on many of the maps are very similar to what you see here. In the Bungalow District, you see at the intersection of one, six, and four, and that little green L that's right there, down by the H, yeah, right there. So Panchita, De La Vista, and it goes, the Bungalow basically goes from, not quite Ampamoo, but up to East Mitchell Torena, and then Alta Vista over to Olive. And consistently, what happens is rather than the Bungalow being the center of anything, it's always, in a lot of the district maps I've seen, it's always out on the edge. And, and then we, we just don't have, we have a heck of a lot more in common with Laguna down to about Cannon Perdido. And then if you go towards State Street in downtown, and probably actually even over to some extent Oak Park, than we do, once you get up into the hills with Riviera and East San Roque, and then Foothill and Cielito, Cielito, and then Eucalyptus Hill. And when I see that, it, it's like we're being sort of shoehorned in rather than really maintaining the neighborhood of interest. And then, which is, ba-dum-bum, my transition over if you could go to maintaining neighborhoods. And what this is, this is, I, I put together, I went and, I love the online map, awesome. And went together and, and this is not exactly, I mean, this is, you know, within 14,870 or whatever it is, 750, and, and then you sort of cobble it together. And so it's not perfect, but this is much more representative. And I, and I think the young man that was speaking before me was talking about downtown and how it sort of got carved out. And one of the things with district number four, I mean, there's some exceptions there, obviously, but we spend a lot of time, we're six blocks off of state, and we spend a lot of time going downtown, and we walk. And, and so this is sort of taking a look and saying, okay, who's within walking distance of downtown and State Street, and who's going to care? And then what do those houses look like and what kind of density? And where, where are the commonalities there? When you begin to get up into the hills, you get into the Upper East, it's, you get into bigger lots, they're farther away, they care about different things. And, and, and for example, if I was up in the hills, I would care a lot about fire safety. I mean, all those areas, I think, got evacuated the last time we had three fires right in a row. And so there's a very strong common interest there. We care about fires too, but we don't care as much about fires as somebody who lives up in the Foothill neighborhood or in East San Roque where they got evacuated, or up on the Riviera or Eucalyptus Hill. We care about what's going on in downtown, we care about, you know, how do we create, you know, neighborhoods where we can have families? We have folks who are starting out and who are sort of up and coming, and they haven't gotten established the way that maybe some of the families over in the Mesa or some of the other areas in San Roque or, or some of the other areas have. And I think that we have a lot in, in common there. Just taking a quick look at my notes. Adams, Bungalow District. I would really strongly encourage, particularly when it comes to the Bungalow District and Laguna and sort of downtown right there, to not take the general plan's definition of a neighborhood in stone. Clearly with the West Side, you know, there's some, there's a delta there between the folks who live sort of up the hill and the folks who live down the flats. I think there's a similar delta with regards to the Bungalow District. And then as you go towards downtown, we have a lot more in common with those folks than we do going up the hill. And I think those, those were my highlights. You guys are doing a great job, and, and this is awesome. I know that, you know, once it gets down to push comes to shove, political decisions will get made because that's districting. One of the things, and I don't know if there's a privacy, there probably is a privacy, but one of the things that, as you sort of think about this, we have some really good city council people, some of which are coming up for reelection. I think that there was, in the last meeting talk, that there was one, Randy Rouse, who lives over in the Mesa. I don't know where any of the city council members live. And, and I think as we go through that, that's sort of a key bit of information. If, if there isn't a privacy issue, that would be really helpful to have because I've always heard where you stand depends on where you sit. So I think that would be really helpful as well. But anyway, I, I love the process so far, and hopefully we will have a good result.
Hi, I'm Dan McCarter, and I'll be two minutes because I've been trained. I'm going to give sort of a single perspective. I know there's a lot going on with this districting, but I'm representing friends of Arroyo Burro. And so I'd like to look at map three. We kind of discussed things, and that one seemed to best fit our description of, of what we like to see. And the main reason is because it maintains a watershed. And we have a watershed vision document, and we have a watershed community plan that we've already been taking action on. And so it just kind of fits. It doesn't change any numbers or anything, so, you know, it looks good. But we would like to have a couple of additions, and those are, just tweak it a bit. And that's the Ealing's Plan. So if you can just put up the Ealing's Plan now. And actually, that was, I think, Arroyo Burro watershed originally is what I titled it, but, and that's the one that got all those letters and support or whatever. But the reason why we'd like to include Ealing's Park is because it's addressed off of Los Pecidos Road, which is in the Los Pecidos Valley there and part of the watershed. It most affects that District Five right there because of the traffic all the way up through the entire watershed. And we are in communication with the Ealing's Park organization and discussing like restoration projects and access and things like that. So that seems to, to fit well. Also, we, we wanted to maintain or, or take in the Arroyo Burro Beach area, and I call it an area because it's really technically in the county, but it's highly influences the watershed, it's the mouth of the watershed. The park there most influences Los Pecidos Valley with parking, it's overflow parking, it's, and there's, there's issues that, that are, are being addressed with the park that directly affect the Arroyo Burro watershed. So those are the reasons why. And again, adding these two small tweaks here does not change any of the demographics, any of the numbers. And, you know, basically, this, we like this map because it does keep the neighborhoods, all the neighborhood interests together, it has geographic boundaries, it's continuous, and there is no change in numbers. So, you know, it doesn't seem like a, a big deal. But anyway, thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any more public comment? Okay. Well, this has been great. We are just really pleased with the level of interest that we've had from all of the community in this process. The next step is that we will be posting a summary document on Monday by noon on the city's website. If you go to the city's website, up in the corner, in the left-hand corner, there's a, a link that says District Elections. You click on that, you're going to go to the District Elections page. We'll have a report there. We're also making that report available to the city council, and we'll have copies in the city clerk's office. So if you want to take a look at it before the meeting on Tuesday, you can do that. And of course, visit the city website. And then on Tuesday, we'll be bringing that information in the summary to the city council. And that will be, we'll have more public hearing at that time, and that will also be the opportunity for the city council to start discussing the decision-making process. If we need to, we do have a special meeting also scheduled for Monday, the 30th of March at 4:00, here in council chambers. And so there is time to make these decisions. So do, if you're, if you're interested, you can reserve that time on your calendar in the anticipation that we may use it. That's Monday, March 30th at 4:00 P.M. here in the council chambers. Well, thank you very much. It's been a great process. Oh, yes.
Is there a specific date that the city council has to make a final decision?
Yes. I'll be able to let Mr. Colan deal with that.
March 31. The, the final date for council action is the 31st.
All right, thank you very much.